All right. Hello, everyone. Welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling and Coach Ashley. We are joined today by founders Greg and Amanda Kilwin. Hi, guys. We also have Colin and Kim here on the call. Hello, hello. We have a special guest here today, you guys. We have a special guest trainer. This is Jen from Modern Companion. As you're coming in, you guys, go ahead and say hello. Let us know where you're coming in from. We're really excited to have you guys here today. Just a quick note, we did send out an email earlier in the week. You may have been expecting to see the Ula guys today. We had a little bit of a schedule thing and they will be with us on the fourth. So we are so incredibly grateful that Jen offered to come here and share some amazing training with you guys today. We are always looking to bring her on board. I personally, Jen, love your, your style. I mean, not just like your aesthetic style, but you have this heartfelt way of communicating and sharing. And just for you guys who are here, maybe just a quick show of hands for some love. If you use Modern Companion content with your Get Oiling to help educate and communicate and stay in touch with your members. It's a really, really amazing tools that Jen has created. So let's go ahead and get into that, right? Because I think a lot of folks might not know about Modern Companion and about you. So tell us a little bit about how this all started for you.
I would love to. Thank you guys so much. I want to thank everybody for joining this morning. Coach Ashley, in the Get Oiling group, thank you guys for having me. I have to say something first. So we have, I've been chatting with you guys, letting you know, like, hey, I would love to come spend time with the community. We want to, you know, hop on a weekly work session. Greg, I did not know that I was the fill-in for the Ula guys. You did not tell me that it was these shoes to fill. And when I saw that email this morning, I was like, I stopped singing an extra prayer.
This morning, I'm like, maybe I should have told Jen.
Okay, so, um, yeah, that, that really, it gave me, it gave me a smile and I just was like, Lord, you know, have your way. So that's, that was great. But anyways, we have so many great people we get to learn from and connect with in this community. It never gets old. So let me just introduce myself to you guys and just share with you a little bit about me and who I am, my story with Young Living. So I know we have a lot of new people. Get Oiling is just reaching, just people and helping serve so many people. And so I love seeing the community come together here. And okay, so I've been building my young living business as a brand partner for seven years now. Right after I start, right after I gave birth to my first son, our gateway oil was peace and calming. And, you know, the rest was history. I started sharing about it just over text, social media, in person, had oils on me. I would just oil all the people down and that, you know, that came into my, into my realm. And so it was just, you know, I loved it. I, before finding Young Living, I really fell in love with the natural lifestyle and with just becoming empowered just to take control of our own health and wellness about, I guess, about 12 years ago. And I just drastically changed my diet. I went completely plant-based, which I'm currently now returning to after a brief flirtation with Paleo that did not suit me at all. And so, you know, that, that's been 12 years of just learning, you know, nutrition. I immediately started blogging about vegan food and just connecting online and just studying, like, how, how do I connect with these people? When I found the, the natural wellness community, it was really through nutrition. And to see that we could connect worldwide with others who have a, you know, a similar heart, similar passion, and just we could build this community for ourselves. That's what I started doing 12 years ago when I had my, my vegan food blog. It was called Hello Veggie. And my husband is a, he's a creative director and a graphic designer by trade. And so he helped me, him and his dad have always been just huge marketing and design mentors for me. And so anyways, I just loved being able to build relationships around these commonalities because down here, down here in Alabama, y'all, we don't have, we didn't, we didn't have all the kale and all the quinoa and the, you know, the, the green superfood smoothies growing up. And so I really, at this time, you know, you would go to Whole Foods and you wouldn't see a shelf full of almond milk, oat milk, all the non-dairy things. I mean, you had to, you had to schlep it together and, you know, milk the almonds yourself to get some almond milk. And so it was completely foreign to me, what I was doing then. And I just building that community online and learning how to do it. I had an admin job at a financial company at the time and they said, we don't get a lot of business. You better find something to do. And so all day for about 40 hours a week, I would, you know, professional, professional blogging and all this just because it gave me the sense of community. So anyways, that is this kind of a long story, just to my personal, you know, just kind of where I'm coming from. And when I found Young Living, I thought, okay, this is just a product in a, in a built-in community that's just international. It's amazing. Something that you can share with others that you can connect in such a real way. Because I had experienced this life-changing impact of, of clean living and clean, you know, diet and just using, you know, all, all these things. And I'd experienced it and I believed in it 100% going straight into it. And anyway, so my team, we, we were sharing online like crazy. We, you know, I was, I was blessed to achieve executive in three months and silver about four months after that. I got that bit, who, raise your hand if you had that big old burgundy silver and six oil case. It was one of the, I've got a picture. I should share. I've got this picture of me with this big old case of oils. It was the old school silver and six program. So it's, I love talking about this, you guys. It's taking me back because it's, it's just always good, I think, to remember how we started and just like where our heart was in that, in that time. Anyways, but one of the things that I just kind of learned about myself when I first was starting, you guys, was that, you know, I'm loving the opportunity. I love what we get to do here. I love that we can build a business. I love this, this leadership environment and just investing in yourself and just really pushing yourself to grow the products. I mean, it was just, it was just good on top of good, on top of good. But what I found myself doing was, yeah, she said, I don't have, don't have the big case, but I've heard about it. Oh, hey Sheila, hey Sheila, my friend. So anyways, you saw, yeah, yeah, Sheila, you probably saw me with mine like back when I first got it, girl, like six years ago. I'm sorry, I'm reading chats while I'm talking. That's probably, is that a no-no, Ashley?
Not at all. No, this is, this is live community for a reason. This is where we get to hang out. Go for it. Oh, and I should add here, I feel your pain. I became, I'm from Alabama too. I became a vegetarian when I was 13. And so for 18 years, I was, I'm aging myself here, for 18 years. Yeah, I know what you mean. And to be able to find a community like that, that's incredible, right? Where you, you've done all that digging and that work. And oh my God, here's all these people who already get it and who want the same things.
Absolutely. And so I'm, I mean, I'm a, I'm a sold-out believer. And so when someone comes to something, you know, these days, I don't think just how, how that society has shifted, we don't view oils like some like, you know, you know, crazy, crazy crunchy thing. It's, you know, it's there, they've become so mainstream, which is got, which is great. However, you know, as far as finding people who will really dig into a lifestyle and who really, you know, not everybody has to really find special solutions for their circumstance, but a lot of people do. And so just having that support in the community, it means, it means the world to me. But what I quickly learned when I was starting my business and I had, you know, was probably even before I, you know, was silver rank, probably, you know, executive or so, I was just looking at my team that was forming. And even uplines and just my, you know, my diamond uplines and beyond and crossline. And I was looking at every, what everyone's doing. I'm just kind of, I'm a green personality. I'm kind of constantly just kind of absorbing the, the data, you know, and just, you know, my environment best I can. And I would just found my mind just going, well, you know, you, you should, you should kind of put this out there for you or maybe you could say it this way, or you know, maybe we all can come together and we will share this. And I just started creating, creating shareable content on like, on behalf of as many people as I could, basically. You know, here's, here's a shareathon, let's do a challenge. And I would just, you know, put it together. This is what we all need to say. This is how we, what we need to be putting out there and really helped teams and individual business owners come together around really great shareable content and ideas or event ideas, challenges, things like that. And it's just something that I, I just, I don't know, I just think it's a gift from, I just think it's a gift from God. It's just, just having, I don't know, it just gets me excited to be able to serve by, by leading through some of these thought processes and helping put things together. You know, just kind of thinking about things on that strategic, you know, the strategic, okay, we're, we're thinking about how do we reach people? How can we impact lives? How can, you know, we, we're thinking about our OGB, but also just the, just the creative and the organic and just the, you know, the real human experience of like, what are people really need to experience? And just kind of putting the, the creative side and the human side together with the strategic side. Can you guys sit here and like talk all day long with me about it? Because I will, I love, I love it so much. So anyways, that's kind of a little bit about me. If you guys have not yet been on a Young Living Retreat, a leader retreat, the first time I went, well, the only time I went on the Silver Retreat. I mean, just, we are so blessed in this company. It's amazing. And just to be able to come together, just collaborate with so many like-minded, like-minded individuals, you guys, it's just, I just love, you know, I love Young Living. I, I have the entire time. And I have not been on the Gold Retreat. I had to defer my Gold Retreat twice. And at this point, I just have to email to be like, can I still come? I don't know. I think I can, but I don't, it's been a walk. And then it was, you know, changed last year with the pandemic. So anyways, I look forward to, we need to do like a Get Oiling gathering whenever we all get together, conventions or whatever it is. Maybe, um, maybe, you know, Greg and Amanda can just whip up like a live huge Get Oiling exclusive conference, easy peasy for us or something. But we'll have to get together as a group.
I love that idea so much. You guys send some love in the comments. Raise your hand if that's something that you're into. Because, you know, we're listening. We like to hear what you have to say and we super love hanging out with you guys. And Jen, oh yeah, look at all these hands.
Yes. Oh yes, our power hours. Yes, me and Sheila would do power hours. I still, I still love a power hour. It's a, it's a huge part of how I, I'm, I'm the type, I'm a, so I'm a great personality, but I have a lot of rad. I'm an Enneagram three wing two for any, any Enneagram people, but I really, I love to serve others. And I just love just like, get things done and feel like I'm getting things done. And that kind of is, might be a little bit of a transition for me, but one of the things I've really had to learn in this business is, you know, as an Enneagram three, I want to, you know, feel like I'm, you know, succeeding at, you know, what it is that I'm doing, that I'm achieving things. You know, what I've really had, one thing, you guys, tell me if you guys relate to this in the comments. But in this business, I mean, I've been doing it for seven years now, which amazes me, but you know, I'm here for the long haul. So it's going to, you know, ebb and flow. It's going to evolve and change my life, my desires, my focus. All of this is going to change. Ashley, I think I was listening to one of your trainings yesterday and you were saying something similar about just how we're not just giving this incredibly unique Young Living experience to everybody. So you have to come to us. But it's like, hey, this is me and my life and what I'm doing. And that's incredibly unique for me. And, and also here's Young Living. But just being able to ebb and flow with the changes of our lives and as an Enneagram three, having to redefine, like, well, what do I view success as? Is success, is success in this business, meaning I never go backwards in my OGB? Or that I never, you know, lose a team member or that I never have to wipe the slate clean and start fresh in an area? For a while, I really, you know, I really felt that way. And some of you guys tuning in might relate. You know, the first few years, I feel like I had a lot of cross-lined friends who would say, wow, we thought, we looked at these kind of mentors that we have in the business. Maybe it was our diamonds or Royal Crown Diamonds, or maybe some social media influencers or whoever it was that we knew to look to for guidance. It's not happening as for the way it happened for them. And so you have to really step back and kind of redefine and redefine and just what success is, what, you know, the goals are. And the good news is that really is ultimately up to us. I mean, who can define success for you? So as I went through a season of coaching, this is right before I found Get Oiling, but I went through a long season of personal develop, personal development and just a small coaching group with a couple of amazing Young Living leaders. And they really helped me find the joy and get the joy back in my business. I don't know if it was just too much of a comparison or, you know, my OGB fell below gold OGB. And I just thought, carry me away now. Like I just, you know, it was, it was, those things are hard. And those things, you know, when we, when we are not prepared for how to maybe pivot around certain things in this business or life things, you know, when you have, when you have a child or when you go through a hard time financially, having a child is a good thing, but just to be clear, but that's an adjustment. You know, it's not always knowing which way to pivot and how to maybe look through our business to see success in a new season can be a challenge. And that was one that held me up for a long time, probably a little bit too long, to be, to be honest. But being able to really just say, you know what, it's up to me to decide what is success in this business. And that is something that I'm super grateful that I've been able to just redefine and do. And, and not only start walking it out for myself and just enjoying just all the rewards of that, but I've been able to help hundreds of Young Living team members with tools and things to hopefully be spurring them along a similar, a similar path for themselves of just keeping the joy in their business, keeping, keeping things to where they can focus on what they need to and not focus on what they don't. So, um, I guess I want to share with you guys a little bit. Is this, do you feel like this is, I guess you do, you do questions, save questions at the end? I feel like I'm just going.
Yeah, yeah, we can definitely do that. I think it would be really great because what, what we hear often, right? Is, you know, I'm, I teach here almost every week, right? And we've got courses where I'm teaching things, right? And, and for, you know, for those of you who know, I have a long history in the industry and I know what I'm talking about where it comes to building a business. I am not a ranked leader in this company, right? Like I'm not, I'm not an active distributor of this company. And I think that it's really important for some people to be able to kind of see and understand your story and how you're actively doing things, right? Because I can teach what I know works, but there is just this added layer of you're out there doing this right now. And on top of that, I think we should mention you guys, if you don't know about this already, if you go to modern-companion.com, Jen here is a content provider for Get Oiling members. So Jen not only uses our site to educate her members and to stay in touch with people and to help move people toward new memberships, but she also shares those things that she creates and uses herself for you to use with your own Get Oiling site. So I think if we can talk a little bit, Jen, about, you know, some of the things that you are doing and maybe what you're even using on the platform. And I know you've got some slides prepared as well. So let's go all in with whatever you want to talk about to that end. And, and yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll save the Q and A for after you've gone through what you want to share.
That sounds great. Okay. I just felt like I needed to give, give it a moment for you to chime in and just add to that. So I loved everything you shared. And yes, I love, and I love what you said also, because I love learning from you, your perspective, Ashley specifically. And I love that, you know, how you bring other people in to, to balance that as well. So with, with Modern Companion, I, let me go to my, well, I'll go to my slides in here just a second. But I started out with Modern, doing Modern Companion when I realized that just a huge, just something I felt called to. It was just, it was so rewarding to me. I felt like I saw the need all around me. And I was like, I want to help. I can help. I will help. I want to help. So I needed, I wanted to find a way where I could help Young Living leaders, not just here or there, but I felt like I could just invite everybody in on this who wants to be. And that will be, that will be good. That will be good. And I had the need for content for my Young Living customers that was not confined to social media, that was not influenced by social media, that was direct to them. Because over the years, I saw things like algorithm, algorithms, Facebook algorithms, Facebook group rules and regulations changing on a dime, things, the fact that it would take me so much time to go and just figure out who's sharing and managing my group and keeping up with my group maintenance calendar for the month of all the leaders and following up with all the people who didn't show up for it and just finding all the content from all the different groups. It was, it was a huge time suck. People weren't seeing the posts as often. And, and I saw a huge dip of people just fleeing social media after the election, not this past election, the election before that. And so this, I'm seeing a reoccurring theme at this point. And so I just, you know, really felt like I have to invest in connecting to my downline customers and my team in a way that they will, they will see what I share with them. It will be one-on-one, it will be authentic. But at this point, I'm a, I'm a gold leader with, you know, I've got, you know, I've had about 600 people in my downline at that, at that point. I was a baby gold. And so, but, but I'm well, well aware that there's leaders and friends of mine and all sorts of Young Living business owners who have, you know, massive downlines. And so it's like, we also have that need to be able to save, save our content, save our campaigns, save our, you know, classes and just be able to share them and scale them, you know, like crazy. Because we can't, you know, withhold it from anyone. These, these people have been brought to us and we want to, you know, be a good steward of the people brought to us and take care of them. I don't know about you guys, but I don't, I don't hold back my, you know, my content from anybody in my downline. I want everyone to have it and to have everything they need. So this was a huge need, just the time it was taking, the people who weren't seeing the content or who weren't on social media anymore at all. And so I started text messaging and I've got a really good, I got a really good flow and method down with my texting. That is something that through Modern Companion, I have set up and ready to go for others. And so I will get to, I'm going to share with you, first of all, I want to share with you guys who are listening, my, kind of my monthly overview of my content strategy. So if you are a person who has joined Get Oiling and you're like, this is great because I have Get Oiling. So now I have all the things. This is amazing. So now I need to use them. And you might not know where to start on content. I have some tips for you. I'm going to tell you, can't get into like the nitty-gritties of, you know, every aspect of it, but I'm going to give you a really, really great starting place to consider for your content. What I do is I look at content strategy on a monthly basis. What, what's going on in February? What do we need to be sharing in February? What's the temperature of the market in February? What's, what's happening? But I also look at things quarterly and annually. Last year, on annual, you know, scale, we had a pandemic. Did that affect the type of content that I was writing and what the nature of it was and what we were sharing? Yes, it did. I was not just sending out generic, you know, oils and AFT and raindrop and whatever. I, I customize it and I personalize it and I stay sensitive in my writing to what's going on. We did a campaign last year that was just sending positive affirmations and prayer and scripture out. And it was hugely, hugely successful and just appreciated. And this was right after the pandemic. It was just really starting to hit. And we had people just sending in pictures of themselves going off to work to be on the front line and saying, thank you so much for this message this morning. It encouraged me so much. And so a huge part of what I do with the Modern Companion content is just keeping that heart-centered focus. Because when you have somebody respond to your Get Oiling text or emails that you have on a campaign, maybe it's, maybe you wrote it yourself, or maybe you, you know, purchased it from a couple dollars for me or some, whatever. But when, but when you send it to somebody and they respond to you and they send a picture of themselves going on the front lines during the pandemic, all suited up and say, thank you so much. I needed this. I'm so worn down and I can't tell you how much I appreciate it. That is like what we are here for, if you ask me. That is what, that is like the secret sauce, to be able to show somebody that you care, to show up for them when, when they need you. And, you know, we can't always know what that is, but just show up for them and to be there in an authentic way. And it doesn't always have to be about oils. One thing that I'll, I'll mention this when I pull up the slides and just kind of talk a little bit about the content more specifically and share the strategy, but a huge part of my strategy, and I can, I will just impart this to you guys if you want to take it on, but it's just, just, just being there as a person, just checking in from time to time. I have, I will write, Modern Companion members, I give them just a bucket full of saved replies and messages that are ready to go, just to say hi, just to say happy birthday, just to check in, just to send a little encouragement. Some of them have graphics with them, some of them don't, because that's, you know, personal preference for some. But I think that's a huge value and that's something that you guys can start doing with your Get Oiling right now. So there's a lot that you can learn about with Get Oiling and tinker with, but there's a lot of things that you can just start, just, just, just set, schedule yourself a little power hour, knock some things out, get some content flowing, get some messages flowing, just show up as yourself and then kind of go and tinker on the website, tinker on your vaults and get things going. That's how I do it at least. But anyways, so let me, let me share. Okay, so I'm, I'm gonna, let me just pull up. So Ashley, if I screen share, is it going to take me like the, our main screen away? Yeah, it's going to do the whole thing. So. All right. You guys bear with me just a sec. All right. Let me just make some of these things go away because I'm not prepared.
You're good. You're good.
All right. Enter fullscreen. Okay. So I want to share. So one thing that you guys can go ahead and start doing with your, with your Get Oiling now, you got, you might already have an established website, vault, all the things. That's great. You might not, wherever you're at though, I would say just connect and go. And so that's kind of what I was just speaking to a second ago. And that's get some messages, just checking in. You can introduce yourself. Once, when I, when you join the Modern Companion membership, I have a, I have onboarding process. It's just a guide. I have, I have little steps for you to go. Like first, you're going to do this, then you're going to do that. And I explain like the entire thing just to, to get yourself set up, ready to go. And one of the first things on there is just to, just to connect and go. I call my, I call my collection of saved replies, connect and go. And so that's, that might, that's why I wrote it this way. But just connect is all you really have to focus on. But just reaching out, letting yourselves, letting your, letting your people on your email list. Maybe it's, you're reaching out to team, maybe you're reaching out to, you know, your customers, but just letting them know that you're here, that you, this is, this is my new, this is my new work cellphone number. If you do the two-way texting with Get Oiling, this is my new work number. This is, you know, whatever, if you're on a new email address, but just let them know that you're here. Make the connection. It doesn't have to be an elaborate thing, but just making that connection. I think I do recommend two-way texting. I started out really connecting with my downline specifically over text. And I've just seen an amazing open rate. The way that I word my messages is more in a friendly conversation kind of way as opposed to, as opposed to like some big drawn out, you know, mass email, you know, marketing campaign. And so you can, so one suggestion that you could consider doing is just, you know, grab your, grab, grab your phone, you know, just, you could even just pull open your texts as if you were going to text someone in your phone, a text message. And you could just write out, if it helps you to see it just on your text, you know, service on your phone, just open your iMessages or whatever, and you could just write out what you would write if you were really texting someone who is a friend, who maybe just signed up or someone who is a downline member. So keep it, keeping it brief, keeping it friendly. It doesn't have to look, it doesn't have to have a polished professional look, but just sending out, if you have the two-way texting at least, which I recommend trying it, but that's a great way to get a response from there. You can send, you can just kind of say hi and just kind of set up, you just kind of establish the fact that like, this is my number. I'm going to be texting from here and there. I just wanted you to know. You can give them the opt-in. You know, you guys, we talk a lot about permission marketing. So Get Oiling allows you to have a keyword set up to where they can respond with a keyword. If they do want to get your, your regular messages or specific types of content, you can be, you know, as creative as you want to be with what types of keywords that you might could give. But I'm giving a really friendly message of that's just, this is Jen, want to let you know, I'm going to be sharing some information over text and email and I'm putting together a great place for us to chat online. Just want to see how you're doing today. Let you know, this is my number, you know, that type of thing. But they can still, you know, you can still add the keyword on there. Just reply back this keyword. And you can even tell somebody, I will, I kind of just keep it super, just super honest and authentic, especially if it's my personally enrolled and they might be thinking, why do you have another number? What is going on here? But you can let them know, reply that with this word because my, because my, my texting app that I use for business will, will make sure I see it and make sure you get on this list. And you can just say something. If, if having a friend or a personally enrolled or your team member respond with a keyword feels weird to you, you can, you can just kind of tell them. And if your message is very authentic and friendly, I think they'll be able to differentiate. And if your message is very authentic and friendly, I think they'll be able to differentiate, okay, this is really Jen saying this to me, but. I'm still gonna send her a little keyword to get on her list and that's great. So. Anyway, so once you make that connection, then just keep moving forward, keep building out your Get, um, your Get Oiling site, uh, your vaults, blogs, all that stuff, which obviously will be. Something that you manage and maintain on an ongoing basis. So, what I love to keep in mind for my content is kind of what I call the three L's. It's a little cheesy, pers- you know, perhaps, but um, it helps me um, just kind of keep my focus um, narrow. On just kind of the heart behind things. Again, that's huge for me because. If it's just, you know, checking off the boxes of doing the right marketing strategies, I just kind of get. I just get kind of sad. I get, I lose the, the joy a little bit and um. I wanna make sure my heart stays in it. And so, um. In Modern Companion, I offer, um, you know, I do, I do the Get Oiling, I do, we do text and email. We do vault content. We also offer Instagram stories. We have a great, um, super affordable and just really can be Instagram story. There's a lot of people, especially people on our teams who are star or just starting out and they just wanna be planting those seeds like crazy, like. On Instagram, on, like everywhere they go and they just need just that type of content. I mean, a lot of people, um, we, I have, you know. Diamonds and Royal Crown Diamonds using Instagram stories as well. It's not just for stars, but. You know, there's just, it just, depending on where you're at, what your needs are, this applies to kind of all the content that I put together. And. So, what I would say for you to think about is, when it comes to sharing about Young Living. I like to share about um, what I'm loving. So, that can be, um, you know, your personal testimonies, that can be what you're loving about the community, it could be a product base. You can, you know, you have some flexibility within that, but that's just coming from you, like your real life. Your real life situation, like, whoa, I ju- I just used this peace and calming and my newborn colicky baby slept. For forty-five minutes, beyond, beyond forty-five minutes for the first time. And it was seven hours. I'm loving this. I mean, it was, you know, share your personal testimonies. Also, what you're learning. So, this is um. Uh, this is a, something that I really keep in mind, especially with my um, vault content. And um, also the Instagram stories as well, but there's a, there's an element of, we don't wanna only share, you know, I'm not here just to share. Only peace and calming every day, or only about, um, you know, these two, three, two or three things. It is great to have those champion products, yes. But also, it's okay to throw out there, you know, from time to time. Uh, just as part of the mix, like, wow, I'm learning this and it is fascinating. I, I just learned that there's more molecules. In an essential oil drop than there are cells in the whole body. That is, that is fantastic. What, or wow, I just learned that um. These, you know, this supplement actually does, you know, X, Y, Z or whatever. So. Are we ever gonna try like every single Young Living product? No. Are we ever gonna have our personal testimony or something amazing to share? That, oh, I'm loving this, that we're shit, you know, no, there's so many Young Living products, uh, and we don't have to. But there are certain things, and I will tell you guys, kind of the top, the top couple things that I see. Um, but there are certain things that we can share that are just great, amazing things that maybe we don't have personal experience with it, but like, wow, I'm learning about this. And this is amazing. This is something, and maybe it's something that fuels the, um, just kind of the heart behind Young Living. So, you might share about. The foundation. If, if you um, really have a heart for sharing about. The work that the foundation's doing, or, you know, maybe uh, supporting Hope for Justice, or just like specific, um, specific groups that the foundation works for. Or maybe it's about the, that's one that I see a lot, by the way. I told you guys I would share kind of a couple of the popular ones. Sharing about the foundation, sharing about the heart of the company and how much good they are doing in the world is a great one, just to. To drop in from time to time for, for a lot of, um, for a lot of brand partners. And. Um, another one that's great is just like the sciencey stuff. So, um. I will do this every now and again in the um, the tips that I send out, um, for our text and email campaigns, we have a um, a, a one set a month. Of it, just like a weekly touchpoint. So, whether you send it over text or email through Get Oiling, that's totally up to you. But it's just like a monthly text point, like, hey, I was just, I was just checking this out, or I found this great recipe, or. I wanna kind of share this little life hack with you and we just have that weekly touchpoint. And I weave, I weave the um, the sciencey things into the touchpoints, I weave them into Instagram stories here or there. Um, and also. Um, well, I'm trying to think if I've done that with the vault content in the past couple months. I'm not sure off the top of my head. But just sharing those things, there are certain personality types, you guys, I'm a green personality, I can vouch for it. They are gonna be very intrigued when they learn about the, you know, maybe not all like the nitty gritty. Ch- chemical constituents, but just knowing that there's kind of more beneath the hood. So, you know, you don't have to get into all the, the depths of the science. Stuff and that's kind of why I love putting that towards, just kind of like a quick Instagram story, or just like an occasional, um, occasional oil tips. For e- for email or text. It's not, he, I don't really do a ton of expanded in-depth campaigns. And educational campaigns and huge vault posts all on like the, you know, molecular structure of cells and oils. But, just like a little something here or there, because there are those, um, those, those who are following along, your, um, your oils story. And um. Hearing where you are, uh, you know, coming from and everything, who have that, um, who have that. Place of interest where it's going to just kind of speak to that, that type of brain. So. Anyways, that's just one example. So, just kind of some of the sciencey things, um, some of the things about Young Living as a whole, the company, the foundation. Uh, when I polled a lo- uh, my members, um, I, I do a six-month survey for the Modern Companion group, just so that I can stay just super in tune with. What they're loving, what suggestions they have, what, if they feel like they're missing anything they might need, where their market is at, and that is always one of the top things. That, um, they tell me that they, um, they want to be sharing more, is they have certain people who just want. Um, some of those things that we might not always talk about as often. Such as those examples I just gave you. So. Alright. Oh, hold on, gotta find, there we go. So, I told you guys I was gonna kind of just set you up with like a perspective of what some strategy could look like, kind of on a monthly basis. Um, I definitely would recommend, when you think about, um, starting to do. Um, your, your campaigns and your monthly, um, your, your monthly. Uh, content, hold on, um, okay. Uh, think about, um, think about it on the monthly, but also just be sensitive, you know, are there holidays going on this month? Is it a short month? Is there, is it spring break this month? Is it Young Living Convention? Black Friday? Yes, we want to factor in big things like this for sure. So, keep that in mind. When you are putting together your, your game plan for your content. Um, this is just helpful, it's, you know, don't, don't feel bad if you're thinking, oh shoot, this was last, last month and I didn't even acknowledge it, or I didn't say anything about it. I'm not one of those people who believes you have to, you have to hit up every single, you know, holiday and occasion and go over the top to acknowledge it and. Curate your content and design and everything to reflect it and all of that. I don't think that's really, um. Uh, something that's uh, sustainable. And I don't know if you guys have noticed this, but I think pretty much every day of the year now has like some, like National Donut Day. National Flower Day, like there's, there's like an occasion for everything. We need a National Ninja Red Day is what I think. But, here, so keep in mind just kind of what's going on in general for the month if you can. But, one thing that I like to rotate on a monthly basis are, um, the weekly, the weekly tips. So, that's just a weekly touchpoint, staying connected. Um, I think that if anybody's on your email list and they have opted into your email list and they're a Young Living customer. You know, staying in touch, once a mo- once a week or so, I think that's a great, a great thing. So, classes. I, I put together for Modern Companion, a, um, at least, at least one class a month, sometimes it's more. Sometimes we have a bigger one and then kind of like a small, a little different one. Um, but having a, one learning opportunity. At least a month is great. So, I will add to that, just to say that when you, if, um, when a person does join Modern Companion. I give just kind of a boatload of content upon getting started. So. I, I say that just to kind of factor in that, um, you know. What I really recommend, I'm telling you what I provide with Modern Companion, just so you can kind of know, that's kind of my ideal recommendation. And that is just to have a variety of things that you can pull from. So, if you're a person who, you know, you love to, um, you love to write, write copy. You love to come up with the content and then the design and just kind of pull your own ideas together and that's your jam. That's, um, that's totally great. And I would just kind of think in, um, think through. Um, just having, um, you know, just, just having a few pieces out of the gate that you can always kind of fall back on and lean back on. So, such as like, you know, just um, basic starter kit tours, um, or the main Young Living brands, like get, getting to know the thieves line, getting to know the ninja red line. Um, all of those types of things are, are things that we have, um, ready to go for everybody who joins. And, um, you can just build up a little library for yourself. And that way you can always be pulling from that when needed. And so, if you ever feel like, you know what, I just feel like I just wanna add a little extra content right now, I'm just getting that sense. Or, or, um, that people might need a lot of extra, extra education. Or maybe you have someone who comes to you and lets you know, cuz they respond to one of your, um, weekly reachouts through your tips that. They have a specific area of focus, that they need some extra, you know, like, hey, I got my wheels kit, but I really wanna know what's up with the thieves, you know, you can just put them. On the, um, the campaigns, um, when you have them ready to go. So, um, recipe guides and, um, challenges, these are just, um, the, I just wanted to kind of give you guys, I wanted everybody who came today. Just to kind of be able to walk away, just feeling empowered for their Get Oiling and like, okay, I've got just some great ideas for content and just things that I, I can weave into. Um, a groove. And so, I just kind of threw those out there. Recipe guides, um, you might wanna put together, uh, uh, with, with Modern Companion, I've done what, I do like a spring cleaning one, we do, um, DIY gift guides. Um, things like that, um, challenges. Um, they can be for your, um, you know, ninja red challenges, wellness challenges, things like that for your, um, for your members, but also for your, um. For your business builders. So, those are just kind of, um, a few ideas for you guys. If you are listening to all this and you're like. Okay, this is, this is a lot of things to think through. It is, it is, I admit it and I just, I just love doing it, so. I do get really excited about it. Um, if you are needing like an easy button, just to say, just tell me what to share and when to share it. And what an appropriate pace is, please, then you just, you can come on in and join and we will help you. And you can, um. You can join for a few months and get like a ton of content and just kind of get a flow and feel the strategy, or you can stay, you know, we've had people in there for. Um, you know, over, you know, for a long time. And it's just nice to kind of have it just reoccurring, all the fresh things, you know, it's just a total easy button, um, if you, if you're a person who needs that sort of thing provided, so. Either ways, either way is great. Okay, okay, I keep having to, um, relearn that there. Okay, so, okay, I wanna share, let me, let me share with you guys, cuz, um, I don't have my questions up, but there might be some questions specifically about, since I was just. Telling you, you know, what we do provide and that easy button, I just wanted to kind of expand on that a little bit. Um, so, I have two services right now for Get Oiling. And, um, I am currently, currently working on possibly a third, or maybe like a merge of them. And so, if you guys can give me some like real life. Feedback on that, that would be great, because, you know, that would just be great, but. So, right now, we have, um, text and email, um, campaigns for, um, for Modern Companion, um, members. So, it's. It's a bundle. So, like I said, when you join, you get kind of a boatload of content ready to go. So, you get a lot of, um, free content in our classics. Collection such as, um, a welcome, an, uh, ninety-day. Welcome funnel for new members, um, starter kit tours, the, the premium kit, thieves kit, ninja, welcome home, um, just. Kit tours like crazy, essential awards notes and campaigns, um. I can't even list them off the top of my head, but you get a lot of content. Um, just that I think it will equip you with like everything you need and everything I would want you to have, just joining our community so that you are just ready to rock. Um, we have got that for you and, um, in a batch, um. In a batch of content that you get access to when you become a member. On an ongoing basis, we are going to give you, um. Uh, shareable, shareable resources for, um, the monthly promos, and that also includes Wellness Box ideas. So, Wellness Box ideas are ideas for, um, your monthly, your monthly order. If you're not yet on ER. Perhaps this might inspire you to get on ER, as you see how like, wow, this is, you know, spending fifty PV or spending a hundred PV, or you know, whatever it is, that, you know, it's. It's not, it's not that, you know, this is very doable with these things, I really would use these products monthly, it just really gives you a great visual. Of what's seasonal and just great ideas for putting in your, um, Wellness Box each month. Um, we do a monthly class and then the weekly tips. And again, all of these things, I, um. I have them formatted for you and in a resource bundle, it's all formatted for text. And email. So, if you're an email girl or a guy, then you got it, it's. Ready to go on email and you can just ignore the text if you want. If you like to do only text, or if you like to do a little one or the other, you can combine them. And I have people who do it all those different ways. So, I love that Get Oiling has it so easy to where I can just put all these things from my end in a resource bundle and all you do is click, if you've never done a resource share. You just click it and boom, it's in your campaigns, it's in your, um, Get Oiling and it's super easy peasy. I don't know how much time it saved, would save a person, I mean, hours and hours and hours. So, I think it's an incredible, incredible value for what you get. Um, also, we have the vaults and blogs. And so. In that, um, in that service, for people who need content for the, the webpages and their blogs. We do four, four vault pieces, um, a month and two blog templates, that is brand new and I'm super excited about it. Because we've been kind of troubleshooting how to best serve the blogs. And so. If you have Canva, which is, um, a free service, a graphic, it's like a graphic service that you can use, um, they are gonna be blogs that are for, um. Canva, their Canva templates is what they are. And so, we'll give you a couple of different formats that you can use every month and we just eat, and all this is delivered over. Um, email and or text. So, you don't have to get on social media, you don't have to follow on social media and hunt all this stuff down, um, it's just sent directly to you. And then also in the blog, uh, the vault and blog group, we do, um, discussion room graphics, just so that you can always have just great, just. Um, just pretty and intriguing, you know, just topic, um, you know, just kind of conversation starter things, you could schedule those out for your month. Um, we are starting to deliver the content in the vault and blog group. Um, just a couple of times a month. We have kind of learned that for that. Platform of just building out just the, your vaults and the discussion rooms and all of that, it's just great, you can schedule in advance and you can kind of sit down and do it in batch. And that seems to serve, um, to serve everybody really well so far. So, alright, um. So, this is just kind of a little review, just like some tips for Get Oiling, just go ahead and start now, just connect and then just kind of continue to link up all of your. If you're doing landing pages or, you know, just adding on, everybody might be at a different place, I know, la- adding on just the layers of your Get Oiling, cuz it's so. You know, it's got so much that it offers, but just kind of start and go. So, running reports and, um, utilizing your tags and just really utilizing that CRM are all really great things that, um. I think if you do the Modern Companion content specifically and you have that easy button done. You have the content and what to send and the flow and strategy done for you and you can focus on making sure your tags are the right people. Making sure you're taking notes on the CRM and following up when you need to, utilizing that thing and just running reports and seeing who you really need to tend to. That is the part that, um. That is the part that, that, you know, no one can do for, I mean, you can have, you know, you can have assistant, like pull reports and things like that, but as far as really like just giving that TLC. To your business and just knowing what those needs are and who needs what and having that joy. When you have that, that joy in it. You know, if, if you're looking to have joy in your business, I don't know, I guess somebody could just completely automate a business or something, but if you. Have that system and you're connecting with people, for me, that has been something that's kept the joy in it. And, um. Anyway, so I think that about, that about wraps up what I, what I had to say about that. So, I would love to, um. Hear if you guys have any, have any questions on that, or, um, if I can just give any tips on. Am I still sharing my screen? How do I stop it? Okay.
I think you got it.
I got it, I got it.
There you go, you did it. Excellent. Thank you so much for sharing. We do definitely have some questions. Uh, about Modern Companion. You guys remember modern-companion.com, uh, where you can go and learn more. Uh, Toko asks, uh, I'm interested to know, does Modern Companion have anything for Europe?
No, we don't, but. I would love to and, um, I actually just. Two days ago posted in the Get Oiling, um, Facebook group, cuz I was just going, does anybody in Europe or can't, I was just wondering if. You know, there's anyone in international markets that was really needing or wanting, um. Content. A good friend of mine, she does Get Oiling and she, um, helped me when I was starting with Get Oiling and. She told me right out of the bat that she felt like, um, uh, Europe, um. Did need content and that she had team over there specifically, but that's, um, now that we really have just. Kind of gotten our, our feet on the ground to the extent that we have now after a year, I, I really feel like I want to, um. See if I can help people in other markets, but I'm just trying to get it, my feelers out and see, does, is this a need in? Is there anyone who can help me in other markets with, um, understanding the compliance? understanding the compliance? I would definitely need, I'll just kind of, I mean, I would definitely need to partner with somebody who was, who I can just talk with and just kind of collaborate with. Who knows? Just can tell me, this is how Canada rolls. This is how, you know, you're, because anyway, so there's a couple of things like that. I'm kind of figuring out and just praying through, but I would love to as soon as I can and just, you know, so we might need to talk about that later, Ashley.
Yeah, yeah. Well, so, uh, and, and here's an idea, you guys, of course, you know, like Jen mentioned, she is active in our Facebook group. So tag her. Uh, if you're in a market where you would like to have a conversation about the needs of your market. And then another thing importantly, and I think this is true, no matter where you are in the world. What Jen has done is really successful and, and, and really, um, and really applicable in, in terms of, of, of the, the why behind it. Right? Her technique is transferable, right? Like the, the approach that you use will work anywhere. It's the details that need to get swapped out. Right? So I think that there's a case to be made here that maybe for some of the things that, you know, feature young living products specifically, that's a consideration to be made. I think one of the most valuable things that, that modern companion brings to the table is, is, is really kind of an instructive way of showing people how they can communicate in a heartfelt way. Right? Because even though we, we are, you know, our intentions are heartfelt, sometimes we still don't know what the heck that means. Like what, what do we even say? Right? So even, even being able to, if even if the content is not for your market, written for your market, there may be things that you could even swap out, right? And then of course have that conversation with Jen, just an idea. You know, don't, don't let not having everything perfect stand in the way. Uh, and I definitely recommend that you guys check out what she has. Uh, that, you know, any free stuff that she's offering on her site, just so you can kind of get a feel for the communication style, because I really think that's the magic behind what Jen does with modern companion is, is really just this sort of authentic, um, heart centered communication. So that's the first question. The second question is about Canada, uh, as well. So similar, similar answer here, I assume.
Yes, exact same answer.
Okay. Okay. Let's see. Another question, uh, this is from Sheila. If we were to, uh, join for a couple of months, uh, and then, you know, stop for whatever reason, uh, do we have the content that we, you know, do we still, are we still able to use the content, uh, that we got when we were active?
Absolutely. So when you join, um, when you join, you get access to a lot of content and then ongoing, we add to it, we add to it. With the vault specifically, I'll just throw this out there. I think that because I just know that what people want to be putting out there on their website might be, might be a little bit of a different, um, you know, uh, a nuance or vibe to what they're sitting in emails or texts, or how they're talking to people. Um, in those, in those ways, it's more of like a behind the scenes conversation versus what you're putting out there in your, um, blogger vault. So, um, when I started, um, the vaults and blogs, uh, last year, I really was curious. I was like, I wonder if, you know, I almost, I almost called it like a vault launcher, because I thought there might be some people who want to come for a few months and just really get a feel of how to put, how to put my content here, how to do this, how it works, how it looks, how it populates in my site and shows up and then kind of take it from there. Um, so far, most people have just, most people have just stayed in, but I don't know. But it could be used either way. And really the same thing goes for text and email. Um, I think that's depending on what all you're wanting to put out, it's, it's definitely, it's a huge value because it just saves so much time. But that's, you know, and I know that's not what was, you know, being brought up per se, but I, it's, it will teach you how to use the, um, the system. So if you, you, yes, you will get to keep your content, you will have, um, because you can just once you click those resource links, it's in your get oiling and it's done. It's going to be there until you delete it. And so if you choose for whatever reason, I'm kind of rabbit trailing on that one. But if you, if you do, just do it for a time period, um, and then you leave, you will have it always. And so you can just, and you can join back again later. If you want to get kind of like a little refresher or join for the fall or do things like that, there's no, um, it's a, it's set up on a monthly subscription because it just, uh, for a couple of reasons, it let, but it allows me to bundle the, um, the content at a much, much, much more affordable price. Then if it was just being sold, here's your week, you know, just per campaign or, or per class, um, it would get really expensive if I did it that way. And so anyways, but so it's bundled at a discount that way, but you can always, but it's not anything you can't cancel. So yes, you can cancel, you can hop in and out. That's totally up to you.
Okay. Another great question. Uh, are you willing to do a, a tutorial of how to set all of this up from scratch using get oiling and modern companion? Uh, for someone who's never used texting campaigns, uh, you know, for instance, right? So, uh, do you go live or do you have videos and like, do you do it together? Uh, how does that work for actually showing how your content can be used in our platform?
Um, yes, I am willing and yes, I do have some already. So in my face, so right now I have a Facebook group. So when you go to my website, modern dash companion and you get started with whatever get oiling service that you want. Um, you will be sent an email that you will be added to my list. So I will, from there on either be texting or emailing or both. You, you know, content and up, and updates and things like that. But also I have a Facebook group that you can join in that Facebook group. I have a list of video tutorials of, um, just kind of coaching, kind of more sho- shorter and smaller, but just more chat similar to what we had today, just kind of behind the hearts behind it. I, I, um, share with you about every piece of content that I offer, kind of how you might want to think about it, how you can incorporate that into, um, building your business. And, um, so yes, I have tutorials in there, but, um, I am going to be giving them a refresher really soon. So I'm excited that we're also kind of at that season, because that's always fun to kind of just, you know, ref- refresh and just get everything feeling, you know, up to date a little bit, just because, you know, with anything techno, it goes so fast. And it's like, oh, you don't want to use the one from eight months ago. I want to use one for now. So we're going to be doing some fresh ones coming up soon. So that will be great.
Excellent. Excellent. So there's a question here as well, kind of relating to market content. Do you have any Spanish content yet? Any Spanish language content?
Not yet, but I would love to.
Get in touch.
Yeah, I know. I know. I would love to. Um, I will need to, I will need to find probably a, you know, the right person or two to partner with on some of this international content. And I'm very, I'm just kind of, I guess I'm just kind of praying about that. I'm just seeing if that's, I, I see that need. Um, and I'm just still trying to get a feel for what that need is. Um, I have had people acquire over the past year, um, but it's not been like, you know, 10 people a day or anything like that. So anyways, I'm just trying to kind of feel that out and I will definitely stay in touch with, you know, Greg and Ashley to talk with them further about it and see, you know, their thoughts on solutions for that. But, um, currently I'm just US only is what my, is what the products are. So the picture, so, so if the Canadian lavender has a different label than the young lip, than they, the United States, mine is all United States based products on my graphics. And, um, and it's worded based on FDA compliance in the United States. I do have some international, um, subscribers though, and they have been, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. I haven't asked them like exactly what are you doing and how and why and what's your thoughts? But some people are tweaking it to suit their needs. But I want to say Singapore and maybe Australia. Um, I don't remember off the top of my head, but so that's kind of where I'm at with that, but hopefully, hopefully soon.
Okay. Wonderful. Okay. One more question for you, Jen, and then we're going to move over into, uh, we have one website review today. Uh, Suzie Webb, if you're here, go ahead and raise your hand for me so I can find you and bring you out so we can chat about your website. Uh, there you are. Awesome. I'll bring you out here in just a second. So this question for you, Jen. Uh, can you describe the Sunday stories a little more? Is it a story for each day of the week, or is it just one for each Sunday? This is one of your offerings for modern companion, right?
Sunday, yes. Sunday stories is my Instagram story subscription. So, um, what I do is I, um, I text them, it's send it, it's, it's Sunday because that's when I deliver them. So, um, every Sunday you can get a, um, Instagram story delivered to you 5:00 PM Central. From me, they're going to be anywhere from five, you know, they're probably five to eight slides per story on average. And, um, these are a great way to, um, going forward in particular, um, I'm going to be adding in more ways to say, you know, you know, redirect people back to, um, a landing page or, um, to a Facebook group or just like wherever you might want to be. Um, promoting your other events or other web spaces or whatever. So that's a fun thing I'm going to be adding in soon, but I have those on rotation and I kind of, um, I kind of fa- fall back to the three L's that I shared with you about. I do kind of a little bit of just, you know, I won't get into that too deep, but I just kind of give you a variety of things to share about on Instagram stories, just be planting seeds, um, for the young living lifestyle overall. So maybe something that's interesting to learn, or maybe just a product testimony or, um, I can share, I can share more about that. I've got samples of those that I can share, but, um, anyway, that might be, that's a great way, um, to just kind of be sharing, just planting those seeds for people who might want to then come to your vaults or get on your text or email list to get more frequent tips from you. And, um, going forward, I've, I've started, uh, well, anyways, going forward, I'm going to kind of be looking, I am starting to look at, um, ways to kind of integrate that with specific, you know, get oiling needs as far as, um, you know, just things you might want to share to get people to vaults and just stuff like that. So anyway, so, but yes, that's Instagram stories.
Excellent. Okay. So just one follow-up question to that. We got a couple of super quick ones as well. Uh, the Instagram stories that you make, uh, do those translate to Facebook? There was a question from Terry about whether or not you could use those on Facebook as well.
Yes, they translate to Facebook. They also translate to me, we, I say, I don't know. Um, and so yes, they are.
Excellent.
They are versatile.
Okay. Another one, uh, is there any difference between your, your, uh, bundles for get oiling text and for project broadcast? Or is it the same thing, just on different platforms?
Well, yes and no. It is, it's essentially the same thing. So I format it, I, I take the same content and the same strategy. Uh, and I format it and for both. However, for get oiling, it's kind of like a twofer because you have it formatted for email and text. So you, you kind of get twice as much for the same price. Um, so it's twice as much, but it just gives you that flexibility. You know, there's some people using it only who might not be doing text and that might not be their thing or vice versa. So you have flexibility, you know, with it, but I, but it's, um, it's the same strategy wise and, um, content wise, as far as what the theme, the theme is and just kind of the focus, because I really try to keep it, um, you know, again, if it's convention month, or if it's like a big holiday or Mother's Day gift ideas are coming up or anything like that, I, I really try to, um, you know, I keep all the content just very relevant to like the here and now.
Excellent. Excellent. Uh, and then one question about your vaults. Uh, is that vault content primarily targeted toward members or is this something that could be for leads as well?
That's a really great question. And so, um, everyone is going to have different vaults set up to an extent, or at least you can. And so I, um, what I send you are what I call vault pieces. And so it will be, um, a, a segment of, of a page that you can put into your vault. And so if I'm sharing, if I have a vault piece put together, for instance, on, um, the, uh, the premium starter kit, you, um, I will maybe say this is a premium start. I, I word it in a way that if you are a, um, a prospect or a customer, it's not going to sound like it's not for you in either of those situations. And of course you can always go in and tweak the wording. So I will have it worded a certain way, but if you want to add, hey, I'm so glad you're, you're, you're interested to learn about young living, or if you want to add as a young living member, you'll, you'll really need to know about this. You can add in your own wording to customize it for your vault. I keep it kind of neutral so that you can put it in either, um, a member vault or a prospect vault. And, um, and so there's just some flexibility within that.
Excellent. Excellent. And you have a Facebook group as well. So if people are using your content, they can kind of put their heads together around sort of how to, you know, how to use this for those different iterations, right?
Absolutely.
Excellent. 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 Awesome. So you guys, you guys, modern dash companion.com, uh, look for Jen in our Facebook group, uh, seek her out, especially if you're someone, I know there's several people in the chat here, Jen, that want to have a conversation with you about other markets. Uh, so Jen, thank you so, so, so very much for coming on here today and sharing your heart and your time and your knowledge with our community.
Absolutely. I feel like I should end with like an ooh la quote or something, but I don't have, I don't have one off the top of my head, you know? Anyways, but, um, yeah, I love you guys and I thank you so much for having me today. And I just love sharing with everybody. We'd be glad to answer any questions. You guys can, send me an email or follow me on Instagram or message me, or if anybody has any other questions, I'd be glad to chat anytime.
Awesome. Thank you so, so very much, Jen. You're welcome to stick around. If you see questions coming up in the Q and A and you want to type answers or come over in the chat, you're welcome to do that. But yeah, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thanks so much, Jen. Really appreciate you joining today.
Absolutely.
All right. Hey Suzanne, Suzie, I'm bringing you out. You should be allowed to talk now and I'm going to come over and share your site. Let's talk about, uh, what kind of, uh, feedback you're looking to get so that we can get you the advice you're looking for today.
Hi, can you, can you hear me?
I can. Hi.
Fantastic. And I've been trying to sort out my member area. And I've been following the, moving the, uh, members from Facebook over to get oiling. And my, I've only got one active group, which is the 28 day challenge. I just want to know sort of like, does it look rubbish? Or, you know, you keep changing it and, you know, it just, does it look professional or what, what do you think?
Okay.
What can I do to change it? I don't know. It's just, um,
Is this it right here?
That's, yeah, that's the one that should be a landing page on there.
Okay.
Or maybe somewhere, somewhere down there.
All right, here we go. Do you need help getting back on track? 28 day challenge, nutrition course, hormone reset, detox, call it what you want. I love it. Look fantastic and feel five years younger in 28 days. What I would do, because this is really the pitch, um, I would consider making this, uh, this font face, just because it's a little easier to read. Uh, making this large, because this is really the promise. Right? This is what we're promised, promising this, this might actually be even more impactful to have as the very first thing on the page, bigger than anything else, look fantastic and feel five years younger in 28 days. When somebody sees that that's a possibility for them, they're going to want to keep scrolling to see what, what it is and, and how they can get it. So I would, I would make this, um, just a regular font face like this, not something that's scripted. It's just a little easier for the eyes to read quickly. Um, and then, and then, yeah, just having that be the, the big thing that they see first. All right. New courses starting the first day of every month. Next course, first February.
First of March.
Excellent. Ah, yes, yeah. So you're, you're running, um, so you're bringing people in all the time, uh, but you are, you're doing a new program, uh, every month that people are, are being able to, are able to get into. Okay. So if you're in, uh, my YL team, you may be eligible to take part for this challenge for free. Excellent. If you're not, uh, you would like to take part, contact me and I'll give you the payment details. Okay. So are you, um, I guess just a quick question, because you, you obviously want people to be able to purchase this. Uh, perhaps right off the page. What, what I would recommend, oh, go ahead. I'm sorry.
It didn't really work. I tried that because, um, I think I tried it in November. Then the ones that paid got into the vault and it worked fine, but all the people I had manually didn't. And it's a complete mess for the first five or six days. So I just took the payment button off. If they want to come in, I send them just, I just send them the PayPal invoice and it works.
Got you. Okay. So I'm, I'm logging out of my share here. So, um, so I can actually go and, and log myself into your site and look, um.
I've added you to the vault already.
Oh, 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 you have. That's right. Let me, let me see if I can log in then, and then we'll go from there. Do you have a? Okay. So one thing that, that perhaps you could do here then, here, I'm going to go back to, to sharing my screen here, just in case this does actually work. Um, for, because we, we don't have a menu item. It doesn't look like, do you have a member? Oh, there's your member area. Okay. Well, let's find out. All right. So I should have that here shortly. Uh, but what I was going to say here is, um, the way that, that I have clients set this up is, uh, of course you're, you're going to want to have a purchase link. Uh, and, and what I would recommend that you do, because, uh, you're, you know, your February people might not participate in March. And I know we've, we've talked about this on our, on a previous call, uh, for the, the move your groups course, but, um, so for, you know, basically people get access, let's just say that they purchased for February, uh, and then they pay you 28 pounds. Uh, maybe they don't want to do the live challenge in March, but they're still a part of, of your vault, just for, for reference for everyone. That's kind of where we're, we are right now. Uh, my recommendation is, uh, is, is to get new people, uh, to purchase and get them access to the vault. What you would do is you would create a custom page inside of your good oiling account and have them pay for the, uh, that month, right? So this would be the February course. Uh, or in case, in the case of what you would be doing next would be the March course, uh, you would charge 28 pounds. That would be the, the payment settings on that custom page, and that is in the page settings. Uh, and then you, that page would add them to the vault after they purchase. Uh, and then of course for your young living team, uh, you would go and select those people inside of your account and you would add them to the vault and just make sure that you check, there's a box that you have to check that says provide access for free. And that's, that's how you want to make sure that they And that's, that's how you want to make sure that they get access. But let me, let me go check my, my email here and see if my new login has come in for you. So I can go and, and see your 28 day challenge. It's taking a moment. Um, I don't know if there's, my internet is slow. Oh, here it is. I found it. That's me. Okay. So we're logging in here. We've got a new password. Fantastic. All right. So you have added me to this one, right?
Yep.
All right. Let's get started. I love this image. It's great. Um, oh, I would recommend, it looks like when you created, you probably made this image in Canva. Do you see how it is? Um, it's, it's got a transparent background. The, um, the images that you use for your vaults, if you're going to use a, um, a background like this one, which is fabulous. Uh, you want to make sure that your image is not transparent for this one. So it might work well to have this as a transparent background, say in your emails or something like that, or on your blog. Uh, but we want, you, you're going to want like a white background here. So it's, um, more legible.
Thank you.
All right. Yeah, of course. So you've got to start here page, which is great. You've got a video for it, which is even better. Excellent. Any questions before you start? There's a contact. Suzie, that's great. All right. So this is congratulations. Here's our steps. We've got a challenge journal. Wonderful. Oh, that's good. That's good. And they can print this out and check off the boxes. Very nice. I would say first and foremost, and I think this kind of speaks to one of the questions, uh, that, that you asked is, you know, whether, you know, whether or not it's worth, you know, 28 pounds. I, it's obviously worth 28 pounds. That's like a pound a day to like, get this promise of five years younger, right? And looking fantastic, feeling fantastic in 28 days. Um, I think that's worth a pound a day. So let's, let's go ahead and get that out of, of the way. Um, you know, you know what you're doing and what you're leading people through. Uh, and, and so long as it's easy for, for folks to understand how they interact with this in order to get the result, then it's worth it, right? So here's what we do. So we've got a prize and in order to win it, we check in daily. Uh, let's see, you get double the points if you post a picture. That's excellent. Uh, you share your accountability on social media with a hashtag that you can search. That's excellent. Um, oh, oh, just a note on hashtags, uh, hashtags, uh, it, it's, it's going to basically create a hashtag that is just this. So, um, I, if you remove this, you, you're going to want the hashtag to be Suzie Webb's, uh, 28 day health challenge, but remove this little asterisk. So it actually becomes a full hashtag.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, daily completion of journal. This is great. That's great. All right. And then you have a zoom challenge. You've got a live party at the end. All right. So let's go check it out. So the first thing that we want to do now do this, that's great. It's clear. So we go say hello. Excellent. So this is our challenge chat. This is great. Just a tip, what I do, uh, when I use this very same feature, look at these folks posting pictures. This is so good. Um, what I do is I create an introduce yourself post. And then once you've created a post, do you see where it says nine hours ago, right here? Um, after you've created a post, you can grab this link, copy this link, and then from your start here page, just link to it from right here. And that'll actually take them directly to the introductory post. So you've got one post where everybody is kind of chiming in and saying, I'm from here. I wanted to be this when I was eight years old, or you know, whatever information you want, uh, to use to get the conversation started. That, um, and it also, I, I think myself, I think that this, uh, this helps to facilitate interaction a little more just because this, this is very open ended, right? So now they have to say, uh, what do I do? But if you have a post here that says, you know, and, and I think, I'm not sure if you did the personal branding intensive, but we have, uh, you know, where are you from and what did you want to be when you were eight years old, right? Just to kind of some icebreakers for people. And if you pin, if you point them back to that post, uh, it gets, it's a little easier to get people started communicating and, uh, being friends, friendly with each other. All right. So this is our zoom link. And so I assume this goes off to launch the zoom link when it's time for the live call.
Yep. Yes.
Excellent. Excellent. And then share your goals. Tell me privately what you're most excited to learn about. Excellent. We got to pop up there. Cool. All right. So we've got daily videos. Oh, wow. And you actually have them unlocking. Oh, that's great. Okay. Um, one thing that I will say, uh, because this is, um, it looks like you may have this set to unlock after a certain number of days. Uh, that's a feature that is going to function based on when someone is added to the vault. So I believe you, um, you added me today. So this is available. Uh, and then, uh, you know, maybe through tomorrow or something, and then tomorrow, and then on the 20th, this opens up. Now, if, you know, if, if I am maybe like, I don't know, if, if you're, you're promoting right now for people to join the March challenge, I would assume, or you'll start doing that soon. Um, this unlocking based on date is something that's really only going to work in a unifying way if everybody signs up for the challenge at once. Right? If they all enter at the same time.
Yeah. Again, all in on the day, the two days before, so everybody starts on the first.
Hmm. Oh, that's right. I see. I see. Okay. So then on the page that you use to take payment for this month or next month or what have you, uh, then what you would want to do is just apply a tag to that person so that you can add them all to the vault at the same time. Perfect. Okay. Okay. That makes sense. Okay. Excellent. Well, you've got that figured out. So.
I think it's different day one, you might, you might have all the other days available to you as well.
Uh, let's see. No, it's, uh, yeah.
But you, you, if I let you in now, which I wouldn't, but you could, you could do catch up.
Hmm. Excellent. Okay. Okay. Perfect. Great. So you've got, you've got a quick thing. Now is this going to be the same, are you're making new videos for every, um, every month for all of you?
No, no, it's evergreen.
Okay. Good. Good. I was going to say Suzie, please. That's, that's too much work. Okay. Uh, so we've got our class. Excellent. We've got a chat which we've seen and then learn more. Let's talk about that. Excellent. So you have folks who, who are, are joining this group who may not yet be young living members. Uh, and so they're coming over here and they're learning more. No, this is excellent. This is absolutely excellent. Great work. Did that just pop up? Greg, was that, was that what I thought it was?
I think I glanced down. I missed whatever happened. Sorry.
Oh, no. Okay. I know we, we have, um, and I usually work in the advanced editor. So I don't like see that option to make the, you know, the animation on these things happen. So it's just really cool to see. Excellent. Oh, you've also got, um, you've got some books in here as well. Um, this is great. This is really, really, really good. Um, yeah. Well, Suzie, I think you've done a wonderful job here. Uh, you, you used the, um, the 28 day challenge, uh, course uh, as sort of a format to begin building this, right? I could, it, it looks like you, you may have done that.
Yes, I did. Yes.
Excellent. No, this is wonderful. And, and you guys, this is, this is what a live, uh, and active group looks like. This is really great work. Well, do you, do you have any specific questions for me? Cause I, I mean, aside from the little, you know, the little bits of pieces that I've, that I've shared with you. I mean, I, I think, I think you've done a, a pretty spectacular job here.
And well, I've been working on that since last July. It's retweeting every, tweaking every month. And, okay. So that was actually started in get oiling. It's never been anywhere else but get oiling. Um, but my one I'm transferring from Facebook and only 16 people. That's why I started on it. That's my, my bat signal thing, which is, um, the bereavement. So my, my challenge, well, my bereavement group, um, that's the, the vault I've just set up. And I've put you into that one as well.
Yeah.
Right. So that one's my new one from the course that I'm doing with you on a Tuesday. So there's not much in it yet.
Okay.
But that's just, um, I want, I'm almost ready now to invite the 16 people over from Facebook over here.
Wonderful. Wonderful. What a, what a meaningful thing to do. This is great. And actually here's an instance where the, the background actually works quite well with, um, with the transparent image here, the holistic guide to bereavement. That's wonderful. And we've got a little chat room. Excellent. Yeah. I, you're getting this. You're doing great work.
Thank you. It just seems like, you know, it just seems like climbing Everest and you just never seem to get to the top.
Uh, well, I mean, that, that is, that is what success looks like, right? It's a journey.
But over the last 24 hours, because I knew you were going to have a quick look, I've done so much work over the last 24 hours.
Well, it shows, uh, it shows, and I know you've been working on this for quite some time and, and you've really been investing in your knowledge and following through. And, and I, I'm, I'm really impressed with what you've created. And I think if we come over here to, yes, we, there, there we go. If you look in our chat here, very impressive. Yes. It's wonderful. Thank you so much for sharing that. And I'm, I'm happy to provide any additional feedback while we're still here. Thank you for being so patient today.
That is fantastic. Thank you. Just, it's just nice to know that I'm on the right track.
Yes, I, I absolutely believe that you are. Just make sure, uh, just to, you know, to be able to move more people toward these things that you're offering. Um, and I, I didn't poke around too much to kind of see what your funnel situation is on your homepage. But let's just absolutely make sure that for any, any vault that you're offering, especially if you're charging for it, take a little piece out of it that'll help them DIY some step in, in the, in the direction of their solution. And, and give it away in exchange for their contact information so that people are, you know, who are maybe not quite ready to take the plunge, even if it is 28 pounds. Uh, or, you know, maybe they're not quite ready to join a group to really discuss bereavement. Uh, you know, that they have a little thing from you that they can interact with on their terms from the, the comfortable distance that they prefer. And then of course you have that ability to, you know, to follow up with email and to continually provide value and build that trust uh, toward those next steps.
Yeah. I've got the, the guide is free from the, from the website. The very first thing is get the guide, bereavement guide. Then from the guide, if they want to, they can get the free AFT seconds.
Perfect. There you go. You've got it. You're, you are on the right track. You're doing great work.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Absolutely. Absolutely. Um, I, I thought we had a question, but really what we just have here, uh, from Julie is a beautiful work Suzanne. Hope to get just a bit of that done. Love your site. So thank you. And thank you for sharing. All right. Great. So, uh, you guys, I know we've, we've gone long today. I appreciate all of you sticking around. Huge thanks to Jen of modern companion for coming and sharing, uh, her insights with us today. Thank you to Suzie for, uh, for sharing your hard work and inspiring the community with what you've been doing. Uh, and of course, uh, here, let's Brady Bunch team. Uh, so we can all wave and say, see you next week. Thank you guys for being here.
Bye.
Bye, everybody.